Thank you, Diane Reeves on Jazz and Six Amendment Support of KJazz 88.1. All the music you hear on Jazz and Six are always available on our website, jazzandblues.org, and all you have to do is remember what day it is. You know what time it is. It's Jazz and Six on KJazz 88.1.
This is Ocho Sanchez. Happy holidays from KJazz.
I call the regular City Council meeting of Monday, January 28, 2013, to order. Councilwoman Deaton, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the City Clerk please take your call?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Protem Deaton.
Here.
Councilman Levitt.
Here.
Councilman Shanks.
Yep.
Councilman Sloan.
Here.
Approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and any rearrangement of the agenda. This City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to ask the City Attorney to discuss the continuation of Agenda Item L, the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor. For the benefit of the public, Agenda Item L is an appeal of a conditional use permit for a property located at 546 Ocean Avenue. It turns out that the property, the public hearing tonight was not properly noticed, and so we're recommending that the Council continue that item to February 25th, and so we can provide additional notice to the public. Now, if anyone's here on this matter, our preference would be for you to come back on the 25th. If it turns out that you cannot make that, you're welcome to speak during oral communications about this particular item, and we'll have that part of the record.
Thank you. Do any Kansas City Council members have changes or wish to pull any items?
Well, I wanted to pull J, but I think you wanted to also, so.
I'm not pulling it anymore.
You're not? Okay. I'd like to pull J just to hear what the staff has to say.
Okay. Mike?
Here, no. J's already been pulled.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. So I'll have.
Okay. Item J has been pulled from the consent calendar for a separate consideration. Are there any other changes proposed? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still move.
Please vote. Okay. The motion is approved by a five to zero vote. Okay, presentations and recognitions. Tonight, the City of Seal Beach will rec-- I'll get the words. I'll start again. Tonight, the City of Seal Beach will present a certificate of commendation to Los Angeles firefighter Yandel Bishop to recognize his receipt of the Civil Service Purple Heart Award for First Responders. This award was long in coming and well deserved. When arriving at a house fire 10 years ago, Mr. Bishop was shot twice by the homeowner who wanted to see his house burnt down. And Mr. Bishop has recovered and is now a firefighter in San Pedro, and I'd like to give him the certificate.
Sure. I'm still honored and proud to receive this commendation.
You can come on forward if you want and take it from here.
My name is Yandel Bishop. I just want to say thank you very much for this commendation and recognition of what happened 10 years ago, which is still ways heavy on my mind, but nevertheless, I appreciate this.
Oral communication. This is a time members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items within the subject matter of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Council cannot address or take any action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by the law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the Council's discretion, be referred to staff and placed on future agendas. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state your name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a five-minute period. Any documents for review should be given to the City Clerk for distribution. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward to the podium.
I beat you to it. Good evening, Mayor Miller, Council, City Management, Chief Joe's, both of you, and everyone else. Well, if either Elizabeth or I are standing up here at this time of year, it's time to announce the 39th Annual Run Seal Beach, Saturday, April 13th. Eight o'clock in the morning start. Mayor Miller, we're inviting you to be our official starter, and we're looking forward to seeing all of you out there and support and everybody else. As I said, this is our 39th annual. Last year, as you, if you recall, we ended up the year on a real big high. We gave a record-breaking $165,000 away, which brought our total up in the past nine years to over $800,000, which was given back to the greater community. We touched tens of thousands of people out there, to all the nonprofits and booster clubs that we gave the money to. And I guess records are meant to be broken, because last year I also announced that we gave, that we got commits in a record-making sponsorship. Well, this year, we beat that by another 15%. And who said the economy is bad out there? But we need to thank all of the great corporations and cities, and of course, our city attorney, our city businesses that really stepped up to the plate to sponsor the race this year. We will have over 6,000 pairs of feet out there stomping through the streets, running and walking through the beautiful streets of Seal Beach, and over 400 or 500 volunteers putting on this race. And it's all done by a small little committee that Elizabeth and I and Seth had up of 10 or 15 people. So we got, Elizabeth and I were able to get a couple months off after last year's race, and we started things back up. Registrations are already going. If you need to know how to register, I suggest you do it right now, because we are going to limit the amount of registrations to 5,500 for the 510K run-walk, and we'll have 500, 600 kids in the fun run. Sign up on our website, which is www, and it's very easy, runsealbeach.com. We couldn't have and hold this event without the great support of our city, our city management, and of course, the Police Department, which gives a tremendous amount. Of course, Public Works and Tim Kelsey in the Recreation Department. So once again, thank you to all of you. I look forward to seeing you all out there. We'll give you more updates as we get closer, but everybody remember Saturday, April 13th. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and City Council. My name is Beth Black, and I'm one of your newer members of this town. We have just recently moved in as Pedego Electric Bikes, and we are opening our electric bike business in the Pavilion Center. We're thrilled to be here. I was born and raised in Orange County, and my partner, Brian, is going to bring in one of the bikes for you to see. We have a line of beach cruisers that are electric, and I wanted him to come and show the bike tonight, in particular, to share with you just how quiet they are when they're running. These are not those gas-powered bikes you've seen on the road. These are all electric. We are going to have, Brian, you want to show? And Brian can tell you a little bit about some of the specs, if you'd like to hear about it, but I did bring a few of our brochures that have the specs in the back, and I have to tell you, tell some stories about people who own the bikes. And I unofficially call it the Bragazine. It's a brochure, and it's a magazine, and we feel that we have plenty to brag about with these bikes. But our grand opening celebration, thank you Chamber of Commerce, by the way, they graciously offered to host a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I wanted to let everybody know that Saturday, February 9th, at 1 o'clock, they're going to be coming, and we'll have a couple of bikes out front with a ribbon across, and they will be taking care of that. We'll have a group ride with a bunch of Pedego owners who will bring their bikes from around the area, and we'll ride around town and share the fun with Seal Beach. We're just thrilled to be here. Brian, did you want to say anything about it? I brought a few extras. We'll leave them for anybody who wants to see.
Quickly, I'm a type one diabetic, and several, Beth and I have owned Pedego electric bikes for two and a half years. And before that, we went out on standard bikes, and one time on a ride, my blood sugar dropped out. I've been taking insulin for 39 years. And so it was pretty scary. I had to drink some orange juice, get my sugar back up. And when we got the electric bikes, it gave me security knowing that I could get back home all right, because you're pedaling, exercising. Plus, for people who are afraid to start exercising, start bike riding, they have the sense of security that they're not going to kill themselves over exercise, that they can get back home. Not only is it healthy, it's fun. It's a lot of fun. So we'd just like to invite you all to come to our grand opening, February 9th. Thank you very much.
It's very cute, too.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council and City Staff. My name is Michael Towne, and I live in Old Town Seal Beach. I am here today to speak on behalf of my friends Lisa Crispin and Gordon Gigo, who are here in the audience with me today, about a matter involving the leasing of the small space of city property located in Old City Hall Building at 201 East Street. Suites 170 and 190 currently occupied, all are in part by Hello Gorgeous. Lisa and Gordon have been attempting to lease all or some of this space since October 2012, and have engaged Seth Eker of Black Marble Consulting to assist them with the process. Seth is currently out of town. We live in a time of transparency, good government, and fairness more than ever before. The information highway has made it possible for city residents to become aware of city activities. Once something is not right, it is quickly brought to the forefront for corrective action or explanation. We understand that many years ago, the city decided it was in the best interest to hire a property management company to manage city-owned properties in order to make, take the city staff and council out of the loop so as to avoid undue influence by city staff and council when choosing renters and lessies for city property. On Tuesday, January 22nd, the Council received an email message and 17-page attachment in regard to the lack of transparency by the city and its contracted agents to provide a clear path and process to potential business lease applicants to lease all or part of the space currently available in the Old City Hall. Further, Seth and I have spoken to a few City Council members requesting them to look into this matter. In brief, over the past 60 days, a lot has transpired. The former property manager, Van Cap, was hired by the city to fulfill the property manager role and held this position on October 26, 2012, when I contacted them on behalf of Gordon and Lisa to lease the Hello Gorgeous space in Old City Hall that had been listed by them with a sign in front of the building. Upon contact, Van Cap showed with us that Hello Gorgeous had not renewed their lease because they were downsizing and trying to sell their business. It was reasonably common knowledge from the owner, the city, and other professionals of Old Town that the owner had stated over the past few years that she was having trouble paying the rent and wanted to downsize. Because of these reasons, I was also informed by Van Cap that they had recommended the city that they should not renew the Hello Gorgeous lease, because the owner had personally indicated the space was too big to satisfy their current and future business plan of being a single-chair hairstylist operation. Further, Van Cap indicated that Lisa and Gordon would be a good, suitable tenants. As indicated in my letter from October 26th through December 18th, 2012, Van Cap, Seth, and I tried to move the process forward for Lisa and Gordon, but as explained by Van Cap, kept getting delays and unclear information from the city that made us unable to make progress. In November, we were informed by Van Cap that the city informed them that they decided to extend the lease to Hello Gorgeous while downsizing the space. As mentioned, this was in opposition to Van Cap's recommendations. In turn, Lisa and Gordon informed Van Cap that they would still like to lease the smaller annex space. Again, they were met with unclear information and delays by the city on moving the process forward. At that time, Van Cap indicated to us that Lisa and Gordon posed no competitive threat to Hello Gorgeous's business, because, as previously mentioned, the owner's current and future business plan was to be a single-chair hairstylist, and having another salon adjacent to Hello Gorgeous would help in a collaborative manner that was the common practice in Old Town. After over 45 days of efforts by Van Cap with the city, on December 19th, we were informed by Van Cap that the city, not Van Cap or Pacific West, facilitated a new three-year lease directly with Hello Gorgeous for the smaller annex space. On December 20th, we received an email from Pacific West rejecting Lisa and Gordon as tenants before even getting to the application process, and it appears that the rejection was based on their lack of understanding of Old Town Seal Beach. On January 22nd, I spoke to City Manager Jill Ingram, who explained to me that the rejection decision of Lisa and Gordon wasn't personal, and that they just got caught up in the transition to a new property management company. Further, Jill shared with me that the city signed the three-year lease directly with Hello Gorgeous during the transition period, because they wanted the new property management company to start with a clean slate, since the owner of Hello Gorgeous didn't get along with Van Cap. Council, this direct involvement, intentional or not, is a breach of the city's intended independent guidelines and process. Lisa and Gordon was subjected to a different set of criteria than the current tenant and possible future tenants, which has exposed the city unnecessarily to legal liability. Due to my limited time, I cannot go through the serious events that we experienced with the new management company, Pacific West, their representative, Bill Packard, and the city from December 20th through December 17th. However, I must state that nothing changed with Pacific West. The process remained difficult, non-transparent, and confusing to both Seth Eker and I. We hereby request the Council to place the city property management and city property leasing matter on its agenda as soon as possible for open debate and public discussion. Further, I request the Council, city and Pacific West, not to lease the annex space in question in Old City Hall to another party until this matter is clarified so as not to injure Lisa and Gordon further. I thank the Council and staff for hearing my concerns and being able to answer any questions at this time or in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak to a couple of issues tonight. The first has to do with the asset investment firm that we hired back in May, PFM Consulting. Item D on your, in your packet, is a list of our assets, our $42 million in assets. And we hired PFM back in May to make recommendations for investment of our assets and to proceed with investing those assets. I thought that was a pretty good idea at the time, but in looking at this printout, which is through the end of December, it's been seven months, and there's been no investments made. And, you know, time is money. We paid them $10,000 to come up with a review of our investment policies, and also to come up with the investment strategy. They presented that to us in September, four months ago, and I think they gave the public the impression that they were ready to go and start making investments. At that time, in September, they did tell us that we have $18 million that could be invested. That money has been sitting in a money market, in a state money market, making next to nothing. So my question is, is have they made any investments? I know until the end of the year, they didn't make any investments, and what's the delay here? The second question is that under the contract, they're entitled to get another $15,000 as an advisor fee by the end of their, end of their first year, which is May, and that's just another four months from now. So if they don't make any investments between now and May, are we going to pay them another $15,000 to do essentially nothing? Or if they make one investment in April, are they going to get $15,000? I really like to know what's going on with them. You know, the $18 million is making next to nothing, and, you know, we could be investing that money in low-yielding CDs and making next to nothing, plus a half percent at least. Well, a half percent on $18 million is $90,000 bucks. And so not only do we give them $10,000, but we're losing tens of thousands of dollars also as time goes on here. The second issue, question on item J on your agenda tonight, which you pulled regarding the peer improvement contract with Muffet and Nickel. One of the items that we are authorizing them to do for $20,000 is to review the 2008 inspection report that they did and prepare repair plans for the items from that repair plan that had not been done. I just don't understand why we would pay them $20,000 to do that at this time, because every five years, they have to do a whole new structural inspection report. And that was last done in October 2008, so it's due this year. We actually, in this fiscal year's budget, we have $100,000 for a new, fresh structural inspection report. So it just seems, I don't understand why we'd pay them $20,000 to review an old report when we need to have them do a whole new report. So those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, Council members, City Manager Ingram, fellow citizens. My name is Karen Russell. I am currently a member of the governing board of the Los Alameda Unified School District, and I live at 1200 Marlins Inn here in Seal Beach. I'm here this evening to talk to you about school safety. Not so much a surprise of everything that's been going on in the news of late, but just as a little bit of background, our board last summer had a goal-setting session, and coincidentally, we came up as one of our number-one goals, violence prevention and response and safety of our students. And as such, we established a Violence Prevention Task Force that consists of many members of our community, law enforcement, health professionals, mental health professionals, teachers, principals, and security companies, and the list goes on and on. We've had two meetings this year. One, of course, was before Sandy Hook, and the focus was a little different at that time. And of course, the second meeting was after Sandy Hook, and of course, things have changed a little bit in terms of our focus. But always in the forefront of our minds as a board and a community was what happened to us here in Seal Beach on October 13th of 2011, the slum meritage. And one of the questions has always been, what if Scott Decry had made it to Maga School to pick up his son? Fortunately, school was out at that time, but we will never know. And so this, I, these are the unknowns that really drive us to make our children safe. During this last task force, we broke into groups, and we discussed various areas of school safety, things such as stunts seeing, security cameras, security guards, volunteers, and the list goes on and on. And as we were discussing the various aspects, it became very evident that many members of the task force were interested again in having school resource officers, sometimes called SROs. We at one time had school resource officers, one school resource officer at Los Alameda High School. And the City of Los Alameda provided that particular SRO, and budget got tight, that spot was eliminated. So we have been without an SRO at Los Alameda High School for three or four years now. After the meeting, the school board had a workshop where we discussed all of the issues that the Violence Prevention Task Force had discussed. And one of the things that we determined, and we directed our superintendent to look into hiring a consultant that would oversee all of the various aspects of what we've been discussing. It's just a daunting task. All of our policies and drills and that kind of thing have now had to be looked at very carefully. Just as an example, school lockdowns may not be the answer anymore. I mean, there is a lot of different opinions out there, whether that is actually the right thing to do, and the case of a school shooter as an example. So that's one of the reasons why we are looking into doing the consultant, and we're going to look at our budget and pay for that. We, as I said, the whole issue is just really overwhelming, and that kind of brings me to the reason why we're here tonight. We would like to see two school resource officers in our district. One of them would be at the high school, because we have 3,200-plus students at Los Alameda High School. But we have over a quarter of our students. But we have over a quarter of our students in Los Alameda Unified School District come from Seal Beach. Even though we only have one school, Magaw, which is in Seal Beach, we have students that attend Hopkinson, which is in Rossmore. We have students that attend Oak Middle School, which is in Los Alameda. We have students who attend Bacolod Middle School, which is in Los Alameda, and of course, the high school, which many, all of our students from this area attend Los Alameda High School. We have over ninety-eight-hundred students in our school district, and so we would like to request your assistance in acquiring an SRO for the safety of our students. We would like to have one of the SROs be a roving SRO to help out at all of our schools. And I, that, I, we would like to ask you to have your staff have discussions with our superintendent about how much support, if any, you might be willing to give on this important issue. And I would like to thank all of the council and the staff and everyone who've been working on us with many issues, that we've really had a very cooperative venture. And I know tonight that our joint use agreements are on the agenda, and that's been a long time coming. And I know Tim Kelsey and Patty Meyer, our CBO, Deputy Superintendent, have been working on that, and I appreciate all of the help that they have given as well. So I want to thank you very much for your time and for listening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I think you all know me. I'm Robert Beck. I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant on the public hearing item, item L.
Mr. Beck, could you speak into the mic? I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm here, Robert Beck. I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant or the appellant on your public hearing item. City Attorney mentioned it has to be continued to February twenty-fifth. The applicant would like to defer his comments and presentations to the twenty-fifth rather than speaking here tonight. If there is some opposition that's speaking later on this evening when that item comes up, I'll catch it on the DVD. Just want to let you know that. Okay?
City Manager Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. So the last time I was here was two weeks ago with my same issues. But the article about the Forbes magazine, I did go on and read the article, but I am going to send her a letter. She needs to come back and talk about taxes. Taxes, we're the most heavily taxed city in the state. Taxes. And here we are with a new business. Wait till they get all the bills. Taxes. We have the highest utility taxes. So I was kind of disappointed about the pensions for Cal-Purs, because when they make a mistake and where they place the money, they come back to me. They don't come back to the people who are going to get the money to help make the difference. They come back to me and the city. And I'm kind of like the revolving door going in and out. We have all these people, they don't stay. They don't want to come here to help our city. They want to come here to get that paycheck. And why? Now we've got a new treasurer, isn't she in charge of where the money's supposed to be going? Who's taking care of business here? Why isn't there someone here on the city council looking out for the taxpayers of the city? Why isn't there someone here that wants to be on the panel when they're talking about pensions? Why isn't there someone here in the city talking, wants to be on where the money's going? Why do we have to wait for all these people to come in and out the door, in and out the door? I've yet to see one that's really put in any effort in our town. So I've got two other things on, on my letter. It's the city attorney, which everybody knows that I think you should go. I would like to vote for a city attorney. That way we can get him out, get a new one in. And that bike trail over there, walking bike trail on the river, someone's going to get hurt bad. Before it was done, it was five miles an hour, and there's nothing there now. And those bikers are crazy. And I think I've spoken to the Recreation Department about this, that something needs to be done. If there's going to be a race in Long Beach, they need to put up some money to pay for whoever they hit. I have a, when they come at me, I just ask them, you have insurance? It's, it's real crazy over there. So I'm back on the pensions. Nobody took care of us. The people that have to pay them, where were you? Where were all you to get elected to represent us? We still have two people in a truck, which is impossible to pay for, two people in a truck giving tickets. We still have a private tennis court, and somebody sent me a letter about the private tennis court trying to go, trying to go public. I'm really against anything with showers in a public tennis court. We don't have showers here. We don't have showers up at the other one.
You have one minute.
That was one minute. That lady talked for a long time. Still have the yacht club, which the supervisors of Orange County get all the money, and we get to pay the bill for the water, for the sewer. Did we ever get the money back put in, in Old Town and the Hill? They took that money to build a new sewer. Did we ever get that money back in our sewer fund? We're still paying for the education of people that come, go to school, leave, and here now they want money from us to put officers up at the school. We still have the bed and breakfast that is not paying for itself. And it's really, the private sector couldn't even make it work. So how is the city of Seal Beach supposed to make it work? The private sector couldn't make it work. They had lawsuits like crazy up there. And we still have, should the city ban the practice of double-dipping?
You're out of time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jorge Moreno. I live at six, you know, six Ocean. I just wanted to address the roof deck, the rooftop decks, the last city council meeting, I know this is the second reading. There was some comment about what does in-use mean? I believe Mr. Shanks had said that as long as it was king down every night, that would be acceptable. I would just ask that you consider the fact that sometimes if you have a party that goes into eight or nine o'clock at night, you probably don't want to have to take it down at night, you know, for the, you know, because of the neighbors and stuff like that. So I'd ask that you consider to, you know, at least be able to keep up the canopies for a weekend, Friday to Sunday, kind of a thing supposed to not disturb the neighbors in the evenings.
I am back on the smart meter. I was here a couple of weeks ago and displeased that my neighbors don't know anything about the smart meter. But started with the premise that global warming is probably not anthropomorphic, if that's a term, but deep-sea currents have a cycle, the sun has a cycle, everything has a cycle, and it all affects global warming. The global warming, as it's set up now, sustainable, et cetera, the green movement, it's all a corporate movement. It's not because of green. And so to the smart meter, which is also corporate. I presented some information about health issues and the smart meter, and I was going to come and refine some of that tonight, and I went to look something up, and I found something brand new. So I'm, I'm not as prepared as I might have been, so I have these things printed, and I'll read a little bit if I may. First, I found a documentary that then sent me to this report, EMF slash EMR reduces melatonin in animals and people, Dr. Neil Cherry, second of September two thousand and two. And the abstract, the first couple of lines are that melatonin is a vital natural neuro chromosome that regulates the daily circadian cycle, that's your sleep cycle, in mammals. Melatonin is the most potent known antioxidant. At night, the pineal gland's output of melatonin raises, and the melatonin is carried by the circulation system throughout the body, passing through the cell membrane and scavenging three radicals in the cell to project the DNA, protect the DNA. It says project, I think. The pineal gland, a pea-sized organ near the center of the brain, converts serotonin into melatonin. And this has a long daily pattern, a strong daily pattern, with a high melatonin output at night and low melatonin output during the day. Alternately, serotonin dominates the day and low at night. The light-driven day cycle is primarily controlled by signals from the retina of the eyes, and I got lost. I'm going to skip there. I'm going to go just quickly to a conclusion. I don't want to end up like that last lady and have you [laughing] done. The conclusion and recommendations, and I have one of, I have seven of these tonight, and I apologize, last time I was short. There's a substantial and robust evidence that established a causal relationship between electromagnetic fields and radiation reduced melatonin. Therefore, there is a sound scientific basis for concluding that the melatonin mechanism is one of the established mechanisms between various, very serious health effects and acute and chronic exposure to electromagnetic fields and radiation. Because of the extreme sensitivity of the brain, electromagnetic fields and radiation and reaction to the reduced melatonin, and melatonin-based bioindicator mechanism such as sleep disturbance can be a very useful tool or showing that electromagnetic signal is causing many other serious health effects, including all of which are linked with reduced melatonin. I, I, that is--
You have one minute.
Oh, there's so much between that, but I see this woman's problem with these children could be involved. I know, I'm very close to someone who had a psychotic episode in high school and wasn't sleeping. So that's the kind of child you're going to end up with. Research is showing that we, we have a resonance or a frequency ourselves, and over the eons we have become in sync with the earth. But all of this stuff around us is changing the frequency, and we don't know it, and that's why we're getting sick. Anyway, I have this terrific resonance being of frequency, that's us, we're the beings of frequency documentary, and, and then this report for all of you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council? City, you know, wanted to declare all communications closed.
Mr. City Attorney, several people arrived late. Would you mind readdressing Agenda Item L?
Attendant Item L, which is the appeal of a conditional use permit for five forty-six Ocean Avenue, will not be heard tonight. It's been rescheduled to February twenty-fifth, and there'll be a renotice in both the newspaper and also within five hundred feet to all the residents that were within five hundred feet. If you're here on that particular item, they cannot make the twenty-fifth. This will be your opportunity to speak right now. Otherwise, come back on the twenty-fifth, and you can be part of the public hearing on that, on that day.
They can speak shortly, a little later.
Okay, if you want to, yes, either way.
Uh, would you, do you have a city attorney report?
Yes, I do. Earlier this afternoon, the city council went in the closed session to discuss a number of items that were identified on the agenda. The city council gave direction with respect to item A, B, C one and C two. There was no further reportable action taken.
Are you sure?
That concludes my report.
The city manager, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Shanks, do you have anything that you would like to comment on?
Yeah, I'd like two things. The agreement with the school district that sets out their responsibilities and the city's responsibilities for those things we use, plus any future liability, this has taken like four years, and there's been a lot of staff work, both on the city's part and on the school's part, and it is really very good that this has finally been completed. And, and so I'm happy to see that. One other comment I'd like to make to Joyce about the two-man parking meter vehicles, and what she's speaking in reference to is the pickup trucks that have left-hand drive that are used to drive by and mark cars up and down the Old Town area primarily. Well, we have two Jeeps, right-hand drive Jeeps, that will be coming online probably within the next couple of weeks, that should solve that problem, and we can go then to just one-person marking trucks. That's been, I've been involved with this for like four years, but it's finally coming to fruition to, and I think we're all happy to see that. And that's all I have.
Councilwoman Sloan?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Deaton?
Yes, I just wanted to talk about school safety. And as a former teacher, children's and teachers' safety is very important to me, and I want to thank you, Karen, for coming and talking to us about it tonight. Gary and I are both on the Collaboration Committee, as you know, as are you, between the city and the school district, and I very much enjoyed our working relationship. So I would very much like to, with the council's permission, ask that our city manager collaborate with your superintendent and start the dialogue. And that's all I have. Do I have council agreement?
I believe so. Yes. Please handle that, Jill. Okay, Mike, do you have anything?
No, no comment.
Okay. I'll just add that Mike, I'll cover you. Mike and I, on January sixteenth, attended the Mayor's Council Academy in Sacramento, where we had a refresher course on council and interfaced with the city manager. As you know, the council, the majority of the council sets the policy, and the city manager carries out that policy, as well as gives leadership to the staff, as well as runs the city for us. So the council doesn't run the city. It's the city manager's job. So we just had a refresher course in that. Should have had a few more city managers here to talk to us. And we looked at the power and limitations of the council, general law cities and charter cities, Brown Act, cities' rights, the public's rights to know and participate in council meetings, effective and respectful council meetings, and developing good relationships with staff, land use planning, communications, and financial responsibilities. It was a good course. It covered everything, and for me, it was a good refresher course, and that's all I have to say.
Anticipatory record, that's your report for both of you. Mike, you concur, right?
Yeah, I, one hundred percent.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, we have council items, Agenda Item A, which is the Seal Beach Pier. The city manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, Assistant City Manager Sean Crumby will present this item tonight. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Item A on the agenda was requested from Councilmember Deaton at the November 13th city council meeting and the request centered around complaints that have come to the city in regards to fishing and some of the conditions of the pier. So after that request, the city staff went and took a look into ways to improve the conditions of the pier, specifically fishing conditions. And so we have some background information to present and some, and a status update to make on the fishing of the pier. Just a little bit of background, in March of 1983, a portion of the pier collapsed in a storm event. Over the course of that year, actually, there were a few piers that received significant damage up and down the state, but over the course of that year, the state came down and helped the city with repairs to the pier. As a conclusion to that, to receiving those funds for those repairs, on December 12th of that year, the city executed an agreement with the state which had several conditions that going forward required that fishing be allowed on the entire length of the pier. That agreement was a 25-year deal which was set to expire in December 12th of 2008. Now, near the conclusion of that pier, or that agreement, rather, the city went through a process of, we were looking for grant funds to replace the decking on the pier. And so the city executed an extension of that agreement for another 25 years in exchange for $200,000 that went towards redecking of the pier. Now that $200,000 effectively covered about a quarter of the project. So right now, the city has completed three-quarters of that decking replacement and has one-quarter to go towards the end of the pier. In regards to improving the current situation out on the pier, it doesn't appear that the city is going to be able to limit or restrict fishing hours or restrict it to specific portions of the pier. There are however, things that we've gone through to look to see if there are ways we can improve the conditions of the pier. The first one being increased enforcement on the pier. And so within our municipal code, there are several things that we can enforce. Number one, smoking on the pier, overhead casting and littering. I think one of the big issues is some of the fishermen cut bait and that's considered littering. So we can do increased enforcement to do that. One item that's listed, the third item on the staff report that might assist that in addition to enforcement, is doing some improvements to the pier to provide locations for this cutting of the bait to occur. And so there's an item later in the agenda to do pier improvements and what we'll do is we'll include in that pier improvements, some bait-cutting stations to try to encourage that activity to happen within those specific spots so that it doesn't happen on the rest of the pier. The second item that we'll be going forward is education of the public. And so what we do with that is try to post signs notifying the public of the problem, both on our SBTB3 newsletters, signage on the pier, we'll use the bulletin board at the base of the pier and just try to get the word out that this is a problem and it's a problem amongst our entire community. We went through improvements to the pier, but also maintenance activities. The big problem with maintenance on the pier is that the city is not allowed, or not, the state regional water quality control board has prohibited the city from washing down of the pier. And so that's happened, that's been stopped probably about 10 years ago. So the city does not go out and wash the pier anymore and so there is no maintenance program. One thing we're doing in that area is, our staff has been actively researching and looking for devices that will allow us to clean the pier and comply with conditions from the regional water quality control board. We do have a vendor located for a vacuum sweeping machine and we have a demonstration that we're trying to set up. We're hoping to have that secured within the next several weeks to come out and hopefully locate some sort of a device that will contain everything on the pier and vacuum it up so that we can take it off. With that, I'll be able to answer any questions that you have.
I have a few questions. The vacuum sweeping machine, will that work on sidewalks too?
We've been looking at several different types of machines, including with the goal being having the ability to clean the sidewalks on Main Street as well. We've not located one yet. We have, we've located some machines that would work on Main Street, but they would not work on the pier. So we're trying to find a universal for both, we have not found one yet.
Okay, yeah, because you led my mind, didn't you? Anyway, first of all, I want to thank you Sean for all the work you've done to try and keep that pier in good working order. I know it, you've been very creative about it and you've come up with some really good ideas and it is, it is as good as we can get it right now without implementing this. I have a couple of questions on the enforcement and that is, I read the section on the volunteers, but can volunteers cite? Can they write citations?
I defer this to the police chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council know volunteers cannot issue citations, it would have to be a police officer.
Okay, so the, what the volunteers will do basically is just have presence there and just be able to educate.
They would be part of the presence, education, most importantly, and exercise eyes for the police department. They could look out in conjunction with the lifeguards and tell us when someone is violating the law and direct the officer in that direction.
Okay, do lifeguards have the ability to cite? You don't know.
Technically, as public officers, we do, however, it's been the policy of the city since before I started here, the lifeguards do not write tickets. That's why everybody loves them.
There's good guy and bad guy, yeah. Okay, so I think that that is, oh, I know, the municipal code. So all of these things are already in our municipal code because as I remember when Chief Lumen was talking to us last budget time and we were talking about the littering issues that we face in our visitor-serving areas, that he said if we got the littering under our municipal code, we would get more money from the citations which would then help pay for the writing of the citations. Is that, am I remembering it correctly and are we set up to do that?
Well, our municipal code does allow us to enforce the littering. We can enforce no littering on the pier. I'm not familiar with the penalty, the cost for the penalty, wasn't prepared to bring that tonight. So, I'm sorry, I don't have that number with me right now.
Okay, that's fine. Anyway, that's just, I just want us to look into these various enforcement actions that we do want to do and know how we're going to enforce them, who can cite, who can't cite, and how to get it under control and then to have this listed the best we can so that most of the, any citations that are written, the state doesn't get the money, we do because we're the ones paying to have the enforcement officers out there. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Just a question, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, is it national protection of oceans and waterways? According to that system, we're not allowed, or it's not legal to wash fish guts back into the water. Do you have any rationale why, it's okay for the fish to be in there and die and get eaten by crabs, but we can't put them back in there? They came from there. Is there any rationale?
I cannot defend the decisions of-
He's just the messenger.
I know, but I look at this and I'm dumbfounded, this is the stupidest thing, yet it prevents us from doing what is necessary.
This is a problem that piers up and down the state face.
We're in good company, but it doesn't solve the problem.
Well, the, as it's been explained to me, the problems are that organic matter, I think the biggest problem is bird feces. It gains bacteria as it dries and so they don't want that dried to get into the ocean. So that's, as it was explained to me, but even though it goes in anyway.
Really stretching heaven, yeah. All right, well, thank you, Sean.
But, but do the birds have feces over the ocean?
Anyway, it's over you, right?
I know, that's a guarantee, yeah.
Mike, if it make you feel better, there's some states that require you to put the fish guts back into the streams.
I have a couple of questions. Chief, I have some concern, having constituents that come to the pier often, they've seen fishermen be disrespectful and I have some concern for your volunteers. Are they just going to basically advise somebody they shouldn't be smoking or advise somebody that they shouldn't be cutting bait and then if it continues, just call the officer and not confront the person any longer?
That would be exactly correct. And I want to emphasize that enforcement is our last action. Sean and I conducted a SEPTED, a Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design of the Pier, and that's where we decided that we needed more bait-cutting stations along with the educational campaign and more posting the signs, stipulating what is acceptable behavior on the pier, and we'd also like those in several languages. Now, once we've educated the public, provided them opportunities to abide by the law, then if they do not, that's when we'll take enforcement action.
Mr. City Attorney? The contract we have with fishing game, if, is there any way that we can buy our way out of that agreement? And if we did, would we be able to have any more control over our pier than we have today as in maybe limiting it, fishing to a certain area rather than the full length of the pier? Is there a benefit to trying to get out of the contract?
I'm not sure there would be because we stopped the deal with the coastal commission and that's their purview in terms of providing access to our coast for recreational activities, visitor-serving activities. We can take a look at this, I was just looking at the, you know, the old agreement again. You know, they never would have given us any money unless we allowed fishing. And at this point, I don't know if we would, if there's anything we could do to curtail fishing. We do have some provisions in our code and by the way, with respect to the littering, that's an infraction and it has the standard provision that three times, if you violate it three times, it turns into a misdemeanor. I don't know if the infraction penalties within our fee resolution, but I think, yeah, I don't want to guess on that, but it's the same as any other type of infraction. Now, back to the issue on fishing, I don't know if this provides much consolation, but we have some restrictions on fishing in our code. For instance, each person fishing from the beach or city pier shall have due regard for the safety of persons. And so if you have someone who's reckless out there or, you know, the police can go out there and give them a warning and hopefully they'll comply. There's other restrictions on casting, the number of fishing poles, and here's one that might provide a lot of comfort, no bow and arrows, crossbows, or similar devices for fishing.
Well, I was thinking that if we had control of the contract or didn't have the contract, that maybe we could limit the far end of the pier and make it available, if you will, share it between the pedestrians and the fishermen so that they can sit and enjoy a sunset or something like that?
It's possible, yeah. We do have some very limited control over that and we can base it on safety grounds. And so I'd have to take a look at the original agreement from 1983 or 84 in terms of the conditions on fishing.
What are you saying, Quinn? I-
We do have some limited control over the fishing. We have, you know, public safety concerns that trump everything else.
So we could then, based on that, then set aside areas on the pier for fishing?
It's possible and that's what I'd like to look at in terms of the precise language of the 84 agreement.
Well, and also, I mean, for the safety aspect, for people to sit and enjoy something, then you can't have fishermen in the same area.
At least overhead casting.
Yeah. Is there any benefit to canceling the contract or trying to cancel the contract?
We can look into that, but right now, my gut feeling is we're going to have to allow fishing there, even if we were able to get out of this contract.
Actually, I'm not trying to eliminate fishing totally, I'm just trying to have them share the pier.
Right.
Control it and also share the pier.
Well, that's something we can certainly look at with respect to the, once again, the public safety issue is always paramount and-
So Quinn, would you take a look at it then and see what you think? Because if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is it won't do us any good to get out of the contract because we would still be bound by coastal commission for fishing. However, due to public safety issues, we might be able to set aside areas for fishing only.
Yes. In fact, in the code, I mean, actually in the agreement, Exhibit A of the 84 agreement, it talks about there shall be no restrictions except for public safety, security or for protection of the structure or facilities. And so for public safety, it would be reasonable to have some restrictions and the mayor's suggestion that maybe at the end of the pier, we might be able to restrict that. And once again, it has to be based on public safety grounds. So that's something we could definitely consider.
One of the subjects that we covered at the conference was how the city receives its powers and through the powers of police powers, the city is required to maintain safety and sanitary condition and it's written in there as sanitary conditions. There's absolutely nothing sanitary, Bobby Guy was out there and he's spreading his dead fish all over the pier and he's cutting guts everywhere. So if it isn't in there as a way out, perhaps under the police powers it would be.
That's something we could also take a look at.
And if you had observation benches at the far end for people to sit and observe the ocean and such, then it wouldn't be very safe to have people casting and fishing at the same area.
That's correct.
Mayor, if I could, I think, and follow up to Mayor Protem Deaton, Protem Deaton's comments about the municipal code, what staff did with this report tonight, based on your direction, is bring you what we feel are options, both individually and collectively, and that we feel confident will improve the conditions on the pier. I think at least if nothing else, this is a starting point and we hope it doesn't become an enforcement issue, but if it does and we don't feel the code is tight enough in terms of regulations, then we can always come back to you with recommendations for a code amendment.
Can you have staff review the options discussed with the city attorney and report back to us on what we can do?
We can.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion then, for receive and file?
Exactly.
And direction to the city attorney to take a look at our ability to limit fishing to various areas on the pier in light of the public safety issues that it presents to have fishing, pedestrians and just people sitting on the pier, all over the pier.
One comment before, are we assured that there are sufficient receptacles for the garbage? I think that's a key thing. When you see litter, sometimes you look around, there's no place to put anything. So I hope that we would make sure we had plenty of receptacles.
And by the way, last time I was there, the cleaning station wasn't working.
One of the things that happens too, other than just the problem with the cutting of the bait and all of that, that really makes it unsanitary, is sometimes groups like to leave their bait there for the next group. And, yeah, well, it's kind of like, I only use two fish out of this package, so I'm going to leave the package and then somebody else can use it, so I'm not throwing it away type of a thing. So it's, even if there's a trash, I saw it with a trash receptacle right next to it. So, but you're right, and I see in the staff report where they say they're going to make sure that it, the trash collection is sufficient to meet the demand, so. Anyway, thank you again.
Does you have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. Consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by one single motion with exception of items previously polled. The following item has been polled for separate consideration and that's Agenda Item J. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
Go, Mo.
Second. Please vote.
I'm here, party to the vote after I read the title of ordinance number 1625, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach, amending the Seal Beach Municipal Code to Regulate Canopies on Residential Roof Docks.
Okay, please vote. That passes 5-0. Items removed from the consent calendar, Agenda Item J, Pier Upgrade Improvement Project Number BP 1002, was polled by Councilwoman Deaton. The city manager, do you have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, Sean Crumbie will again present this item tonight. Sean?
Good evening, again, Honorable Mayor and Council. Item J on the agenda is a recommendation to amend a design contract with the firm of Moffett Nichols to do design improvements for the Seal Beach Municipal Pier. We've got a quick, brief presentation, just to update. This contract is actually a combination of three separate design contracts, and it's been an ongoing project that has, with these three different projects, they're in various stages, that have been waiting for their completion, based upon the pier restaurant at the end of the pier. So, at this time, it's the recommendation of staff to combine the three projects into one project, and go forward with a design contract, and have the designer ready as the RFP process for the restaurant plays through, and the city has more information as to what's going to happen with the future of the restaurant. So, next slide, please. So, the first project that's outlined in the project is pier utilities. Actually, the pier utilities were first identified, it's not on this slide, but in the water master plan, as the, there are two water lines that go out to the pier, one being a fire protection line, and the second being a service line for the pier restaurant. That fire protection line needs to be replaced, and actually, our fire, OCFA, our fire protection has notified the city that they've done inspections on it, and our staff has been repairing water main breaks. The second, that first bullet there, the city council directed, every five years, the city does a structural inspection of the pier, and in 2008 was the last time it was done, and at that time, Moffett, the firm of Moffett Nichols verified the pier utilities need to be done, and the city council directed actually a third opinion, so when the city did a facility condition assessment in 2010, those utilities were, again, verified that they need replacement. A design contract was originally given to the firm of Moffett Nichols in the amount of $68,000, and at this point, 12, I'm sorry, $86,000, at this point, $12,000 is expended, and so what we're doing is modifying the contract to combine all the different things and finish up the designs. Next slide. The second project is the pier decking. As was discussed earlier, three-quarters of the pier decking has been replaced. What's left is the final phase of the pier decking, which is at the end of the, end of the pier. For this project, all of these projects are, by the way, funded in the current capital improvement budget. For this project, Moffett Nichols did design the plans, and they're ready to go. What this contract does is allow funds, so that as the restaurant situation unfolds, if modifications of those plans need to be made, then the pier decking can be changed accordingly. If not, then Moffett Nichols will not move forward with this phase of the design, and we can go forward at the appropriate time and replace the decking on the pier. Next slide. The final is the pier structural improvements. So, the last assessment was done in 2008. Historically, for probably the last 15 to 20 years, the city's done a structural inspection every five years, so it's likely that we'll come back and we'll put it in the budget season for next year's budget to do a structural assessment. The structural assessment that was done in 2008 immediately identified high priority needs, those were completed in 2009, and then the city budgeted funds for the lower priority needs. Those needs, since they were not high priority, have been waiting for the appropriate time to go forward with the construction, so we feel at this time, we can combine all three of these projects and go forward. The $100,000 that's in the budget was not set to redo that study, it was to implement the recommendations of the previous study, and so that's been carried over for the last few years, and so we're ready to go forward at this time. So, with that, I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Would we save any money by going through the study at this time or not?
Well, so, we, as I said, we fixed all of the high priority needs, and over the past five years, there's not been any noticeable damage to the pier, there has not been heavy storm flow, or any reason that our staff believes that there are new high priority needs. Other than maybe some of the, some of maybe the pilings peeling off, or some of the covers coming off, those need to be done immediately, and so we'll do the inspection on that, but we don't believe at this point that there's anything that, if we can do the update to the report in 2013, and then we can follow up in budget money in 2014 and go forward and do that, we feel that's...
So, it's a budgeting issue, is what you're saying, and you want to take care of the money that's been budgeted already, and go through the new budget, and then budget it as we go?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council?
I had a short question on page two. Under pier utility upgrades, you refer to additional utility lines are going to be added to the pier, so that the bait-cutting stations are available. Now, are you referring to the lighting for fishing at night, or are you referring just to water lines at the cutting station?
It's water and sewer utilities to the bait-cutting station, so we'll take a look and see if we can add two or possibly four bait-cutting stations dispersed through the pier. Currently, the only utility lines are at the end of the pier. We have nothing in between the end and the base, so we'll design a system so that we can drain and provide water.
Okay, that, no, you're not looking at additional lighting at night?
No, that's not, that's not part of this.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of light out there on the pier.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6348, approving the amendment of this agreement by, with Moffett and Nichols?
移動
Second. Motion's passed as 5-0. Public hearing, this is a time and a place for the public hearing for consideration of Agenda Item L, Appeal of Planning Commission Decision Denying Conditional Use Permit 12-15, Short-Term Vacation Rental at 546 Ocean Avenue. This hearing will be continued to February 25th, to the February 25th City Council meeting. If there's anyone present that will not be able to attend, they may speak tonight. I hereby open the public hearing. The applicant's not here either, I believe.
Yeah, the applicant was here, and apparently, his attorney was here, and his attorney appeared during public comment from the floor. At this time, go ahead and disclose the public hearing, because we're going to be re-noticing it.
I don't think I've offered the public a chance to speak yet.
Yes, well, I thought you did.
Oh, maybe I did. The script has more on it than that.
My gosh, again.
Does anyone like to speak at this time? Okay. With no objections, I hereby continue the public hearing to Monday, February 25th, 2013, at 7:00 PM.
And that'll be re-noticed.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business, there is no new business. With no objections, the city council meeting is adjourned to Monday, February 11th, at 5:30 PM.